Okay. So, really quickly, introductions. My name is Jeff Wade and I am the Executive Director of the Park District. The guy that just left, his name is Marty O'Brien, he's our Superintendent of Finance. Right behind me is Buggy Amerin, she's our Recording Secretary. And you know Mark, Keith, Paul, Erica, and Steve are Board members. So, what we're gonna do is we're gonna talk about a brief history of the pool. Give you some general information on the Park District. We're gonna present the concepts that we have had an architect develop for us. Give you the construction costs, tax implications. We're not really gonna do an open discussion because we typically just answer questions as they come up. We'll talk about next steps and answer any questions after that. Any questions? Okay, so the pool was built in 1962. It is seven years old right now, it was renovated in 1995. In 2017, the district commissioned Williams Architect to do an assessment of the pool. That included all the E and P, that's mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. Basically, it said that the facility is well beyond its useful life span. It was not advisable for you to make any repairs or improvements. Because we wanted them to tell us how much it would cost to give us an extra five years so that we can continue those discussions. Based on what they told us, the liner that is in the pool right now, there's a lot of cuts and holes in it. The shell of the pool, that's the concrete that supports it, is deteriorated. You can actually push on parts of the wall or step in certain areas. And here, the crunching of that. And then, there is mechanically, in the mechanical room, because the chemicals are not separated from the electrical conduit and stuff like that, there's a lot of corrosion in there. And also, there is quite possibly some underground leakage.
Were the Williams Architects the people who designed Oriole Pool?
Yes, they were. Yes. And just so, because I think I know where you're gonna kinda go with that. They designed the pool, they were asked to design. So, what we have in there is not something that I think this board or myself would have liked to have seen, but that's the pool that we have, that's what we're going to live in. So, based on that information, last year, we did a community-wide survey to get the public's opinion on various things. And we asked them several questions in regards to the pool, like, should we close it? Should we just replace it with light amenities? Should we expand the amenities? Or should we look at this big grand design with indoor/outdoor, Planet Fitness Center, all that, all these things? And that third, that last option, I said, was the one thing that came out a high on the request. However, that is a flawed question, because we could not tell the surveyor, the respondent, how much it would cost. So if we said, hey, you know, we could do all these things, but it's only gonna cost Y dollars, you know, really lower than what it was, then if we came back to you and said, well, you know, we shot that, we were off by $10 million, you would be upset with us. If we said it was gonna cost $50 million, that came in at 25, well, you're not going to, you know, request something so high, so that's gonna sway the thing. So, we couldn't tell you how much it would cost, because we just didn't have the time to do that. So, we really have to look at that question carefully. The other thing that came through was, yes, we want what is there right now, we just want it newer, that sort of thing. So, we asked Williams to develop some concepts. Really nice to, you know, say what we want, but it's actually nice to be able to see two-dimensionally what it could look like. These concepts are not set in stone. These are just what it possibly could look like, okay? We've already talked about some changes that we would do to it, but we'll go from there. So, the conceptual plans. This is your, this is the south end of Har, there's the pool, the parking, Civic Center, museum, museum annex, and the playroom. The red just sort of outlines that property area that we, sort of, is Park District property all. This line should be slightly over, that's a pretty good rendition of what we were talking about. So, so this is that option. We want what we want out there right now. So, what you see is an improved bathhouse out of six-lane, 50-meter pool. That's what's out there right now, 50 meters. We've separated out the diving, the activity pool, which is a kiddie pool, spray pad. Nice thing about this spray pad is, we can separate it out from the rest of the pool so that on a good May or September, maybe hopefully October, we can open that spray pad. And we don't have to guard it, we don't have to staff it. You come in, you press a button, you press a button, then water comes on after a few minutes, shuts off, press again, it's all really nice and... So, this is a water slide plunge pool. So, there's two different types of, wait a second, sorry, I'm the wrong ones. There we go. So, this back to the 50 meter. This is a flume slide. Difference between a flume slide and a plunge slide is where you discharge out of the slide. From the start to where you discharge, no difference, right? You won't even tell if you're in even one of those, it's just where you hit the water at the end, okay? Speeds are the same. So, that's that. Because we've got a little bit more depth, we have to do some stormwater retention. Bathhouse is up here. We've already thought, hey, you know, for future expansion, maybe we should take and put the bathhouse on the south side and just move everything up. What does that give us? Gives us the opportunity from down here to expand into something else. What that is, we're not really sure, but because of the plumbing, the electrical, shared use of bathrooms, that kind of stuff, we felt that it was easier, or made it easier in the future to if it was down below. Any questions? Yep?
Would the party room be similar size-wise to Oriole's party room?
Uh, no. Home room's about 50, this is about 75.
Okay.
Yeah. We wanted to make sure that, hey, you know, we need programming space and this is the best way to be able to do it.
And the same with the concessions, larger?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. The concessions stand over at Har, pretty much fits on that table. Yeah. So, definitely something that we would need to do. So, redesign of the parking lot down here, something that we would need to do, so that...
Have you considered that putting the building along Dempster will block the noise and the congestion, so it would make it, you know, a little bit more pleasurable for the people that are at the pool?
Didn't think about it, but that's a good point. We just thought it would be aesthetically, I would rather look out onto the grass than it went onto the street.
Yes.
Yeah, we do have some trees and stuff that kinda block out that area, so, yeah, definitely something to consider. Yep. Okay. So, the second option is, hey, we want what we have, but we want it newer, we want the ability to enclose it. So, again, we would take the bathhouse, flip it down. Like here, you have a plunge pool, so that's where you're gonna discharge into a body of water. Spray pad, similar, diving, activity pool, kiddie pool. You do have some programming in party rooms, so now we have a little bit more ability to do more programming. Again, we're going to have stormwater detention. We're going to improve the parking lot over there and actually go down into the MB Financial Lot. Hold on, MB Financial Lot. We do understand that this is an area for Morton Grove days, so whatever we would do, we would make sure that that would have minimal impact on days. You know, we would put in large light fixtures or things like that, or bumpers and mediums, that sort of thing. Right? Yeah?
It looks like the main pool is much smaller than...
It is, thank you. I was getting to that. Now, this is, we go to 50 meters to a 25-yard, six-lane pool. Okay, a little bit less. And a little bit less is because now we're taking the option of being able to enclose that area during, let's say, October to May, okay? So, yes, it is, it is much smaller.
In other words, it's just covered, it's not heated?
Uh, haven't gotten into that, but certainly we would need to do some kind of heating in there, because, you know, no one's gonna use it. Nobody uses Har right now because it's cold. Why is it cold? It uses a lot of water and the boiler, boiler, excuse me, boilers. Boilers can't keep up with that loss. You know, everything is sold over there. You know, I think we have actually two systems and it's, it's just not...
Longer hours like that, you know, which is a great idea, it's gonna cost a lot more than it's supposed to.
Yeah, it sure will. Yeah, we can talk about operational costs, so, so I'll just talk about it now. So, this is what we have right now. We expect an operational loss of about $100,000 per year with this facility. Now, that's not to say the first couple of years, we would get that mark, because, you know, it's new, it's exciting, you know, people wanna come to it, but eventually, it'll average out to about $100,000 loss.
Where's that slide going on the first?
I'm sorry, I have three, three things going on here. Wait, did you say something? Yes.
Number one, how many, have anybody done any research on Olympic-sized pools in this neighborhood? I have. There's two in 100-mile radius. Even the high schools don't have Olympic-sized pools. The other pool that's there now, which is the large pool, also had the diving and swimming slides in that pool. So, that pool is not legitimately a 50-meter pool. Half of it's taken up by other amenities. I don't understand why we're going with an Olympic-sized pool in a town this size.
Because that's what the survey said, we want what's out there right now.
But you're saying what was in the other pool was this diving pool and the slide pool was inside that 100, the 50, 50-meter pool.
Right, but that doesn't change the length, it doesn't change, it doesn't, no, it doesn't change the length of the pool.
No, but I'm saying you're not telling those amenities out.
Because it discharges, it discharges, it doesn't, it doesn't, the diving well is off to the side, it's on the south end.
Right, which was in the 50-meter pool.
Yeah, but it's a comment for in the width of the pool, not the length of the pool.
And these are theoretical, they haven't decided that...
No, the, the, okay, but the other question I had was, I'm sorry, let me think, somebody else had a question.
Yeah?
No, I just, on that first one, concept.
Yeah?
I remember my other question.
No, yeah, where is the slide going? I don't see...
It's a flume slide.
Huh?
The flume slide?
Yeah.
Is right here.
It's like a water park, where it's just a long track?
Yeah, I'll, I'll...
That's a water track, and then, once your body, you know, immerses in spots, then it...
Doesn't go in or out?
Here, here you go, here you go. This is a, this is a flume slide. So, right, this is, this is a run, it's a, it's a break, it's filled with water, not that much. So, as you come down, you hit the water, it slows you down before you get to the end. The plunge pool, as you see, here's the body of water, an exit, you jump in, you go right into the water.
Where, where does that end up?
This, this ends up right here.
Where's the water?
The water is in the slide. Yeah, it comes, this little hole right here is the return to go back up. So, that, that's simplistic, it goes through the filtration system and then it goes back up. So, that's what the flume slide and the plunge pool is. Yeah?
My question is, if it's enclosed, everybody's talking about the staffing issue. You'd get a whole lot more people coming in and paying if you opened that, and you were expended hours for a longer season, that would pay for that whole bridge. So, I'm not sure where I'm getting that.
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
Somebody was saying staffing's gonna go up if you have an enclosed pool, it's open more hours.
Sure.
You've got more people coming in, because you open more hours, that's available for people that work full-time? That I haven't gone because I have not been able to get out of work early enough to go when the pool is warm enough to use. I would be paying a fee to go in to swim for an hour and a half in the evening, if you have an enclosed pool. So, that money that people would be paying to come in would offset some of the staffing that would be in that enclosed pool that you're saying would have more staffing issues.
Sure, more, more people in the pool requires more staffing.
Exactly.
So, right, so, we did an analysis based on this one, the first concept, on the current, on the current pool, and just extrapolated out the months that we would. So, could there be a little bit more? Certainly, that would require, you know, increase in memberships or over-reliance on dailies. Can't rely on dailies, you never, you never know. Okay? Yeah?
Maybe you've got more plans to show.
Please.
You can do it. Was there a consideration of a year-round Oriole pool?
Yes, that's the third option, just wanna kinda get through what we've got so far. Okay. So, again, able to enclose this, all right? So, one of the things that, that's, again, those are the slides. So, so, coming back on to this one, still the enclosure in this one, however, some of the things that we saw on the, the survey was maybe some additional party space, or excuse me, programming spaces and an indoor walking track. So, there was three things that the survey demonstrated that the community, both from a private provider, say, of Planet Fitness and a public provider, Park District, is missing out. An indoor pool, an indoor walking track, and a better fitness center. Okay, so, we thought we would include that walking track on there, so this one, okay, here's what the enclosure could look like, okay? And it's basically retractable. So, as it comes, comes out, and steps down each way to the end and closes off. Okay? It is either mechanical or just done manually, however, what we would do would be, we would do sort of the Milwaukee Braves, Miller Stadium, you know, when it gets, close it when it's raining, you know, that sort of thing, it just depends on how much effort and time and step it would take to open and close this. But it's, yeah.
Would that be, would that be useful through November or winter?
We would close, we would close this off, let's just say October 1st, or right after late in it. And it would be closed off until Memorial Day, open for swimming that time. However...
Through the winter?
Through the winter, yes, but we have to, yeah, we'd be open through the winter. There's some logistical staffing issues that we would have to work out to make sure that we're able to do that. So, sorry. One trip. All right. All right, so here's the, here's, this one has a second floor. So, there's your programming rooms and your walking track. The walking track is a little bit longer than the one downstairs. So, you're, you know, downstairs is about 27 laps to get a mile, this is about 23 laps. 22? 22, sorry. Yeah, so roughly about the same. Any questions about...
But just so I'm clear?
Yeah.
That walking track is just a smidge bigger than the one that's in this building that we already have.
Yeah.
Just making sure I understand.
Yep. Okay, so, yeah, sorry.
So, I actually work at the Glenview Park District Pool. I've worked there for eight years. I also work for the Fitness Center for the Glenview Park District. I'm a Morton Grove resident and use our pool basically every day of the summer. Like, I'm a big swimmer, my son's a college swimmer. Morton Grove would be great to have the indoor pool because there's not one in Wilmette. Wilmette is just down Har's Road. There's not one in Skokie or Niles. Well, there is one in Niles. But I think if we're really for, we're thinking, I think that that makes sense, because you're getting the best of both worlds, you're getting the indoor and the outdoor.
Sure. So, what we did was, the final concept, we decided, okay, so there's unmet needs in the community, let's see if we can fulfill. So, what you see here is a 25-yard, eight-lane lab pool, a therapy pool. Therapy pool is at the higher temperatures, like at night, you know, above 95 degrees for, you know, older swimmers, very young swimmers, those people that really can't stand the cold. You have your locker rooms, two basketball courts, and then you'll see a ring around this, that's your indoor walking track, some programming rooms, and then again, we have to expand the parking over here. The big thing is, so now, this shifts down so that we can create parking or a traffic flow through this area. So, it's like, kind of, in-between the building and just south of the walking track. That gives us additional parking and better flow. Yeah.
Because in L.A., it's gonna reopen, and we do, and we have the...
It will. However, their, their new club is a signature club, so it's gonna have a higher price point than what most people are used to, but yes, definitely something to consider. Not only that, just over in, I'm sorry, off of Old Orchard, that end, take, you have a Lifetime Fitness, you've got Planet Hollywood, you're gonna have that, you have Nide, you have Glenview, you have Skokie, so, yes, there's competition, certainly.
A lot of your work is around here.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna mention, though, that we shouldn't be thinking in terms of strictly adults either, because you could have a year-round pool, but Planet Fitness and those places are not for children. And, you know, you know, what, if, the future is, should be including somebody younger than us all.
Thank you. It's not for children.
So, why not, hang on, let's, let's remember the, yeah. Yeah. So, one of, several of the comments about, about the... One of the comments about this one is, is it is not kid-friendly. So, yeah, there's not much for kids to do. We can do, we can do open swims, we can do lessons, there aren't any, you know, there's not slides or, you know, there's, it's not zeroed out, so that's gonna be an issue, yeah.
Where's the gazebo on this plan?
The gazebo will have to be moved. I think we can still do the holiday orbs, though.
No.
Yeah.
It's a little far, it's a little...
It's not like we would tear it down and just find, you know, is there a possibility we could find better spots for it? Certainly, on this, on this rendition, it is not here. That is not to say that we can't go back to the architect and say, hey, whoa, can't touch that, take your towel, let's make sure that goes right back here. It is, okay? So, again, these are just a possibility, nothing is set in stone. Yeah.
On this plan, since it's tampered with, you have to move the gazebo, but you also have to move all those sidewalks, those brick sidewalks that they had?
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, this little area right here, we might be able to do something for them, but if you've been out there recently, they're in really bad shape, and I don't know what they, how they fabricated them, but you can barely make out who donated the stone, so, yeah. So, yeah.
This plan shows me more of a rec center and very little swimming area.
Exactly, yeah.
If we already have a rec center, someday we should enhance this place.
Exactly.
Make a bigger, you know, walking track. Into our pool, per se.
Okay, no, very good, very good point, yeah.
Also, there's actually two problems with this. Obviously, it's gonna be very expensive to do. And number two, it's too big for that area, because if you start putting the parking along there, it, it crowds the area too much.
Yes, so, in a lot of ways, you, you have to, you can't just look at the footprint. You have to look at everything in here, both, you know, on the south side and the north side. So, in a lot of ways, yeah, you are trying to put 10 pounds in, 5 pounds back, right? Just so, so you know, we do have a little area over here for expansion, and I wanted to make sure that I included that.
I have a question.
So, yeah?
What, what is the view from Dempster on each of these, these plans? Because I think one of the nice things about what we have now is that it's like a nice, beautiful space.
Based on Dempster, when a lot of it's just strip mall and, you know, it gives you a sense of community where you don't have a lot of that here, so just curious, what's your view of it?
Yeah, so, what we, what we've talked about was moving the building from the north to the south, but we, we keep all these old growth trees, yeah, who's, I don't wanna touch them, that's, you know, something important to us, but to be able to flip this down so that we could potentially at some other time look for an expansion, that we have that shared use of electrical, plumbing, structurally, we can take money for something. Well, I don't know, but it just made sense that, hey, let's, let's think of it a little bit longer term. Anybody else?
So, it still has a park feel and not a commercial space feel, no matter which?
Pretty much all the concepts have that buffer in front, whether it's the water retention or the path or trees.
Yeah, we can do, certainly, you're talking about a building, brick building, anything that we can do to minimize its impact, we would be able to do that. So, this has a second floor.
Second question?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry.
I mentioned this at the last meeting, I think. Eliminating the kiddie pool. Yes.
Uh, I mean, for option three? Option three doesn't have a kiddie pool. So...
You've got a lot of people who are gonna miss that. I mean, I remember when I was taking my grandchildren there, I went before the ready room, the pool, by the hour.
Okay, I understand, this is just to meet those unmet needs that the, the survey said is, is not being met privately and publicly. Just a possibility, okay? So, this has a second floor. Here's your walking track, some group exercise, storage, fitness, some locker rooms, control access, the light areas are, are roof areas. So, this is just a little bit more than what is currently down in, downstairs. Yeah.
So, if they did that, would they close the slot here?
Yeah, so, very important to do. If, if this was something that we would pursue, yes, you're gonna take everything that's here and move it over. So, what the problem that you're gonna see is you're shifting buckets. So, whereas the Fitness Center supports this building, we now take that out, move it over there to support it, so we would then have to find additional programming opportunities to offset that cost, or that loss, sorry.
And while it'd be there.
Yeah, I mean, it's, there are so many possibilities that, I mean, we could talk about it, but it's, but there, it's, we would just have to build that more, yeah.
Again, you may have other plans, but was there, for the planned view here, was there any consideration of stacking that? So, you actually have a pool underneath, but you have a track going around it, and you're looking down at a pool. Then you've actually reduced your footprint. It might be the facilities, I know they're difficult to maintain, pool, indoor pools because of the corrosiveness of chlorine and et cetera.
Yeah, so, so...
But, I mean, you're, you're, if you stacked it, you have more than one floor.
Right, the problem that you would, could you do it? Certain, yes. But then, then the way you get is a little cluster hold, I, I think, you know, and you gotta worry about it. Yeah, I mean, yeah, this was just an option, can we, you know, change it around, reduce our footprint? Yeah, does, what does that do to the cost? Don't know.
Right.
So, some of the things that we've talked about, it's always good to hear residents voicing that, yeah.
And this has nothing to do with this, but the pool itself, can it be a swimming pool instead of a chlorine pool, which is less corrosive?
Yeah, you know, there's a lot of...
But I don't know if you could do that because it's a public pool.
Yeah, we could, there's a lot of debate about that, so we would just have to rely on the architect to make a decision. You know, there's a lot of, besides chlorine, there's a lot of other things that you could do.
Say, a lot of, it has a lot of hidden areas that has, it has less equipment, and it's easier to maintain with less skill.
Uh, yeah, we had, we had someone in the last one that was like, yeah, you don't wanna go save for this type of environment, yeah, but...
I mean...
It's something that we just look at.
I'm turning the question, yeah, I don't know.
We can certainly ask, yeah.
Have you guys toured the other pools in the area? Have you looked at the two outdoor pools for Glenview Park District, as well as the indoor? Do you know what's going on at the high school, that they're trying to raise money for an additional pool for Niles West, because the Niles West pool is falling apart? So, and in addition, did you know that Deerfield and Northbrook just bought, built two new pools for their high schools? So, I think, like, you are working with the architect, and it scares me that the architect that made Oriole Pool... that made Oriole Pool, when there are pools out there, existing pools that are very successful and they're not as dangerous and ill-designed, so I...
Yeah, so I have over 30 years of aquatic experience. What is built at Oriole, I would never have, I would have strongly voiced the opinion that that is not what we need.
The ramp?
Yeah, no, yeah, I, yeah, it takes a lot of staff to manage that because there's a lot of blind spots in there. That's something that, you know, we wouldn't do, in addition to not only, I'm not sure if it was done, or, we have a risk management agency that would review those plans, they would give their assessment, I'm not sure if that was done, but that's something that we would do, just to get a second opinion on that, so yes, agree, but that's, they designed what was asked.
There's a chair up here.
Okay, any other questions about option three? Okay, so, construction costs. Okay, so option one, that's what you have out there right now, we have a rate, ILO, 9.9 to 10.9. Option two, that's, you know, a little bit, that's a 25 yard, no programming, not a second floor, with an enclosure, without an enclosure, 11.2 to 12.4, with the enclosure, 12 million to 13.2 million. Option B has the, very similar, just has that second floor, 13.6, 18.9, without the enclosure, 16.5, 18.1, with the enclosure, option three, 28.4, 31.2 million. Now, so, one of the things, you'd be very cautious about these numbers, because these numbers have changed since we originally got them from the architect, because the bond market is in flux right now. So we're sort of down a little bit, so that means we can get them cheaper, but that's, that's, that's the reality of here. No, I'm sorry, what's the difference between what?
Enclosure and non-enclosure, between 2A and 2B, the gap widens.
Because you got a second floor on this, on 2B?
And the track, and the track.
So, let's talk about really quickly operational costs. We think that we would have an operational loss of $100,000 with option one, $200,000 with option 2A, $300,000 with option 2B, and option three, we think we can operate break even. That's again, because you're shifting everything from Prairie View over to this facility, so that's why. Now, we, we looked at another park district, the Waikia Park District, they have a very similar field house, Hickson Field House, that has a pool, the fitness center, just sort of like what we were doing, so we got their budget and kind of used that as a guideline, made some far assumptions.
He said that...
Yeah.
Under option three, the fitness center, as part of it, would it be any bigger than the one that's here?
About, about the same size, yeah. You might actually build a little...